Good morning, everyone. I'm Steve Rosansky, President and CEO of the Newport Beach Chamber of Commerce, and welcome to the Chamber's 2022 City Council Candidate Forum. We've got a sharp-looking group of candidates here. They're all fresh and bright-eyed and bushy-tailed for their first candidate forum. We here at the Chamber pride ourselves on being first, so you're gonna get... They're gonna answer questions that they haven't heard yet, and we're gonna get answers that they haven't spoken yet. So you're gonna get, hopefully, 50% of the truth today. After this, it's downhill, so, you know, good thing that you're here. You were smart to come early this morning. So before we get started, though, I do want to give a quick shout-out to Matt Tobin. Matt, are you in the room here? Matt's back there. Matt's the new owner of Champagne's Bistro and Market and Bistro?
Bistro and Deli.
Bistro and Deli, sorry. Champagne's a longtime Chamber member. He took over the membership when he came in. He's changed the menu around. He brought a ton of great food here this morning. Please grab something on the way out, take it back to your office for your coworkers, and certainly visit him on MacArthur and Bison there in the shopping center. Great restaurant. I have my own business meetings there frequently. So thank you again, Matt. You guys did an awesome job. So, you know, we do this every couple of years as the elections roll around, and as I said, we pride ourselves on being first so that we can bring you timely and relevant information so that you can make informed decisions when you go to the voting booth. And I'm happy to say that we've managed to get Lucy Dunn to come here out of retirement. She told me she was gonna retire last year, you know, at the end of last year. I'm gonna read her bio here in just a second, but I told her, I said, "You can retire all you want, but you're still coming and doing our candidate forums." And so she's obliged us today, and thank you again, Lucy. So I'm gonna just quickly read her biography here. Lucy's gonna come up. She's gonna explain the rules of the road here for the forum, and then we're gonna be going. Before I do that, though, I did omit one thing. I wanna make sure I give a shout-out to Diane Dixon, City Council member, former mayor. And Diane's taking up the challenge of running for our State Assembly seat here in Newport Beach, so much luck to you, Diane. And if you have any questions, certainly, hopefully Diane will be here at the end. You can ask her, and she's looking for volunteers to walk and donate and all that stuff. So she may be up here, too. I'm trying to put together an Assembly Candidate Forum. Just having a little trouble with our opponent knocking in a date, but we're gonna do it. I know. Well, yeah, we're not gonna have both of you. But in any event, thank you for coming this morning, Diane. So let's get going here. As CEO Emeritus of the Orange County Business Council, Lucy Dunn retired in 2021 after 21 years... or 16 years, I'm sorry, as leader of a dynamic membership organization of business leaders working with academia and government to ensure the region's prosperity and high quality of life. Before joining the OCBC, she was the first woman president of the Building Industry Association of Southern California and officer of the California Building Industry Association in their 80-year history. She served as Director of the California Department of Housing and Community Development under Governor Schwarzenegger, who also appointed her to the California Transportation Commission in 2008. I'll even give her a shout-out for that because she did help us with Sunset Ridge Park when we were trying to acquire that property, and she was on the commission, and I made that phone call a couple of times to Lucy to help, you know, guide us in how we can get that property. Thank you for that. And then Governor... she did such a great job, as I'm describing. Governor Jerry Brown reappointed her for two more terms. Failing so far in retirement... This is her one failure: she can't retire properly. Lucy currently serves as the Business Representative for the Southern California Association of Governments Regional Council, the Board of the Orange County Catholic Foundation, and was honored with the Bishop's Award for Exemplary Leadership. She chairs the Orange County Housing Trust and is a board member of the California Women Lead. She's also a founding member of Lennar's Homeful Foundation, dedicated to ending homelessness, which we will be talking about here this morning, and founded the Bolson Cheek Conservancy, advocating good practices for wetlands restoration. Her name has frequently appeared on Orange County's most influential list, and I don't know how she has the time, but she's also a singer in churches and choirs. I'm sure her proudest accomplishment is her two sons and grandchildren that live up in the Bay Area. I give you Lucy Dunn.
I'm so delighted to see you all. I mean, any kind of excuse to get out of the house and Zoom meetings, I take it these days. So this event has always been one of my favorite, and it's lovely to be at the forefront of getting to meet these candidates and their positions that they're gonna be, hopefully, taking at some point. So, good morning, and thank you for being a participant in the Newport Beach Chamber of Commerce City Council Candidate Forum. As your moderator for the candidate forum, my job is to give you first a roadmap of how we're gonna do this today. So candidates, here we go, right? First, this is gonna be a four-part forum. Part one, I will ask each of you to make a two-minute opening statement as to why you are running for City Council. Part two, I will ask a series of yes/no questions that each candidate will answer simultaneously by either indicating with their placard "green" for thumbs up... Let's see your thumbs up. Awesome, good practice, right there. Or "red" for thumbs down. No verbal response or explanation will be allowed. Part three, I will ask a series of questions that the candidates will be allowed one minute to answer. Candidates, please listen carefully to each question when it's asked. Each of you will answer the current question before the next question is read. The order of answering will begin in the order of the council districts 1, 3, 4, and 6. The next question will be answered in the order of 3, 4, 6, and 1, and so on. Now, you guys have to help me if I get messed up there, because it's math in the morning, right? Okay. The candidates in each district will alternate in going first in answering the questions. I will continue to ask questions until about 9:15 a.m. Then, part four, you will each be allowed one minute to make concluding remarks. There will be a person serving as a timer, right here, for the two-minute opening statements and the one-minute response questions, as well as the one-minute concluding statements. The timer will begin timing when it is indicated for the candidate to begin his or her response. The timer will hold up a yellow card indicating 15 seconds remaining. When the either one or two-minute time period has elapsed, the timer will ring a bell... Yay! ...indicating the candidate should stop talking. Hit that bell one more time. That's "stop talking." The candidate is not required to use his or her entire time for the response. If the candidate concludes his or her response before the time is up, I will move on to the next candidate. Each candidate is expected to behave in a civil manner toward his or her opponent and the other candidates. Please do not interrupt each other's responses. Audience members should also... Rules for you: refrain from clapping or cheering responses of the various candidates. We have a lot of information to get through that will help inform you, and I know this is being recorded, and so we want to get as much good information out there as possible. At the end of the forum, there will be some short concluding remarks. All candidates and audience members should remain seated until concluding remarks have been completed. Okay, rules of the road. Good, nod heads, okay, we understand. Any questions? Excellent. Thank you for practicing with your thing there. So first up, then, we're gonna ask you to make your two-minute opening comments, all right? And we're going to begin... Let's begin with District 1 and Tom Miller.
I stand before you as a very blessed man. As a 17-year-old kid, I drove to California from Pennsylvania pursuing the dream, and I'm here to tell you that the American dream truly exists. And Tom Johnson, I do not have more money than God wherever you are. The truth is, I started an organization in 1985. I was employee number one. I built the largest automotive reconditioning company in the nation, but that pales in comparison to what I'm most proud of. My greatest achievement is my family, who many of them are here: my wife of 38 years, I have four amazing kids, three amazing in-laws, and four beautiful grandkids. But the reality of it is, I'm not a politician. I don't choose to be a politician. I choose to be your public servant. I'm beholden by nobody. I'm owned by nobody, and I'm an independent voice. And part of what you need to... I really want to be transparent about is I have not spent time on local boards and commissions. And while they're very important, I was busy working 15-hour days running my organization. But the knowledge, experience, and wisdom I gained, and the leadership skills I gained in those 36 years is what I feel equips me to represent you on City Council. I learned to lead with humility, and I wanna dispel a few nasty rumors spread by Team Newport. I am not new to Newport Beach. My wife and I have lived here for six years, and I'm certainly not trying to buy the election. If I did, I certainly wouldn't have come up publicly against Measure B. Measure B was all about power and influence, and that's not what I'm about. I'm also not out there pursuing donations. Please donate to our local communities, our fire police, and Oasis Senior Center, and our animal shelter. And the number-one reason for me running for City Council is to preserve and protect our quality of life. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Tom. Thank you. Next up, Joe Stapleton, your opening statement.
Perfect, thank you. Good morning. I want to start by thanking the Chamber of Commerce, certainly my good friend Steve Rosansky, and our moderator Lucy Dunn. I am Joe Stapleton, and I am here because of the Chamber of Commerce. When I joined the Chamber of Commerce, I saw firsthand the power of community service in a city like Newport Beach. I was born here in Orange County. I was raised in Arizona. I moved back here 16 years ago to Newport Beach, and shortly after moving here, I joined the Chamber of Commerce when I was 24 years old. By the time I was 29, I was the chairman of the board. I was named Ambassador of the Year, Commodore of the Year, the Newport Beach Citizen of the Year, and last year, I was fortunate enough to serve as the skipper of the Commodores Club. And like many of you here this morning, I too am a business owner. I'm the president and co-founder of Spinnaker Investment Group, and today, we're managing just over a half a billion dollars. Now, for me, I was really involved in the Harbor Commission. I've served on the Harbor Commission for four years. I've served on the Finance Committee for the last six years and continue to serve today, and also co-founded and launched the Newport Beach Foundation with the mission of getting the next generation engaged in community service. I tell you all of this because experience matters, and especially in an election like this. For me, I'm an independent thinker, and I'm always proud of myself in doing what's in the best interest of the residents. My focus: reducing homelessness, continuing to strengthen our public safety, and, most importantly, protecting Newport Beach at all costs. And what do I mean by that? Preserving our open spaces, our parks, our beaches, our harbor, well-manicured and maintained streets, fiscal responsibility, continue to invest in infrastructure without ever raising taxes, and lastly, pushing back on Sacramento policies. I'm not running on a platform of rebuilding Newport Beach. I'm running on a platform maintaining and improving that quality of life that we've all become accustomed to. So today, I'm asking for your support to keep Newport Newport.
Thank you, Joe. Okay, audience members, you weren't listening when I gave you the roadmap. Hold those applause, because it cuts into the time. I have to cut and wait for you guys to stop applauding to go to the next one. Hold your applause. So just, we'll give a round of applause at the end of this so you can all cheer your favorites. Okay, thank you, Joe. Next up, Jim Mosher.
Thank you, Lucy. My name is indeed Jim Mosher, and its name many of you may know because for more than a decade, I have been attending every City Council meeting and reviewing, and, much more importantly, questioning the many policy and contract proposals that the professional staff who actually runs our city presents for review and approval to the City Council. But there's something slightly wrong with my having to do that, for I strongly believe that everyone in Newport Beach should be able to trust those we elect to be doing that questioning for us and to be doing it well. In fact, in the City Council manager form of government that we have, the questioning of staff proposals is the primary reason for having the citizen representatives we are volunteering to be. Yet thoughtful council oversight seems often lacking, whether it is measures adopted without discussion, trash charges that are slipped by despite voters having enacted something to the opposite, land uses approved contrary to the voter-approved plan, or poorly worded proposals being placed on the ballot. I am running because I know I can do that part of a council member's job better than it is being done now. What I also know is that I'm not going to be very good at giving snappy one-minute answers to questions posed here today, so I am promising that I will be posting on a website I'm developing, jimmosher.com, a thoughtful answer to each and every question asked here today. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Next up, Amy Peters.
Good morning. My name's Amy Peters. I was born in Chicago, one of five kids, and my parents moved us here in 1975... 1979 to Newport Beach, and I have never wanted to leave since. This is an amazing city that really supports its community. I decided to get married and raise my three children here. We all went to local public schools: Kaiser, Woodland, Ensign, and Newport Harbor. They graduated, all three of my children, my last one just graduated in this 2022 year. He was a valedictorian, as were his two sisters, so I have a real appreciation for our local public schools and our city that supports them. The homeless issue in Newport has really become uppermost in my mind recently. A few years ago, I went to Santa Cruz and saw people camping on the beach, and I know that could possibly happen here if we're not vigilant. I want to continue our strong public policies in supporting our community, and I want to be locally funded. If 2020 taught me nothing, it taught me that politicians who are funded by outside organizations, for instance, the California Homeowners Association, that's always a red flag for me. We need to keep Newport Newport and not be funded by outside organizations that want to change the look of Newport Beach. I want my kids to want to come back here and raise their grandchildren here. Of course, I want to be able to babysit, too, but it's just such a beautiful city, and I want to maintain that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Amy. Next up, Eric Weigand.
Thank you, guys, for being here. Thank you, Lucy. My name is Eric Weigand. I'm a lifelong resident of the city. My parents met each other while they were employees of the Newport Beach Police Department back in the '70s, and my mom served 33 years in our Newport Beach Police Department. I've had the fortunate honor of getting to live and grow up and continue to live today in the same neighborhood that I was raised in, and it's an honor, and I'm extremely proud of my city, and I feel that this is my opportunity as a way to give back and represent what I believe in and what I feel is important to our city. I've been endorsed by all seven members of our current City Council. I have been supported by the Newport Beach Police and Fire Associations. I've served for the last seven years on our city's Planning Commission, and sometimes the decisions that I make aren't popular, and sometimes I'm the lone no vote. And I've been honored to sit on that commission and represent the city. Some of the biggest issues that I'm interested in are housing, public safety, sober living homes, quality of life. Our homelessness issue is obviously an issue that I'd like to address, and I'm ready to... Sorry, I'm kinda nervous, actually. It's hard to do these things, and, you know, all you guys are up here representing our city in this important way, and I guess it kinda got me in my nerves, so I think I'll recover here shortly, but it's kinda hard to, like, talk about yourself and who you are and kinda gloat. I'm not that type of person. I'm just here to help our city do what's right, so you'll hear more from me in a probably better manner in a few minutes.
Thank you, Eric. District 4 now, one candidate, Robin Grant.
I'm Robin Grant. I'm running for Newport Beach City Council, District 4. First, I want to express my extreme thank you to the community for the support over the last year. I am very humbled to be running unopposed for Newport Beach City Council. Thank you so much. I launched my campaign about a year ago, and I have met with hundreds of residents. The number-one question I'm asked is, "Why are you running for City Council?" And the answer to why I'm running for City Council is because, like you, I care deeply about the city, and I want to be a part of keeping Newport Beach the best place to live and work and recreate and raise a family. A bit about my background: I've called Newport Beach home for over 35 years. I'm an attorney, a business owner, and a college teacher. I've worked behind the scenes to improve our city, serving five City Council appointments, representing first responders, local business, community education, and more. My number-one goal is to be available to the residents, present, to listen, and engage for the betterment of the community. Ours is an exceptional city, with a history very rich dating back to its incorporation in 1906. We've grown tremendously over the years, home to a world-class harbor and beaches, wonderful residential villages, and some of the nation's leading businesses. Great cities don't just happen. They're built by strong leaders with vision and determination, and Newport Beach has a legacy of that kind of leadership, and I will continue that legacy. We do have critical issues that take time to resolve. We need to prioritize solutions for public safety, housing, homelessness, airport impacts, and more, and we'll do this by coming together, listening to each other, and participating in governance as a city and not polarized entities. Why will we do all this? To ensure Newport Beach remains what it has always been: the best community to live, work, recreate, and raise a family. Thank you.
Thank you, Robin. District 4, let's hear from Joy Brenner. Joy? Excuse me, District 6. That was District 4. District 6, thank you, it's math.
Hello? Okay, there we go. Thank you. Hello, everyone. I'm Joy Brenner. As you know, I've been serving for four years on our City Council for District 6, which is Corona del Mar, but as I hope you all understand, we represent the entire city. I've lived here for 60 years, and I have always been involved from the very beginning at Corona del Mar High School. I was involved in student government. I've been involved every step of the way, and the thing that has always been important to me is protecting our city. So it came time... I was Chair of the Parks Commission in the '90s, and someone from the Chamber came and asked me if I would run for council, and I said, "Oh, no, 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 no." Then someone from SPON came and asked me if I would run for council, and I said, "I must be talking out of both sides of my mouth," because these are polar opposite orientations. And as the years have gone by, I've realized that actually is one of my strengths. I listen to everybody. I actually always feel like even the person that disagrees with me may have some valid points. They may have some good ideas on how we're going to solve problems, and I want to listen to every one of them. I make it a mission to not make up my mind until the last person has spoken at a City Council meeting, and everyone has given us their thoughts and ideas, because if I cut off what I'm thinking halfway along, I may miss something that's vitally important, and the issues that we deal with are critically important. Being involved for 60 years, I thought I knew a lot when I got elected to council, but the last four years have been eye-opening because everything is more complex than you realize, and I'm gonna stop before I get the bell. Thank you.
Thank you, Joy. Lauren Kleiman.
Thank you. I'm Lauren Kleiman, and I am, as you know, running for Newport Beach City Council in District 6. While I did not grow up in Newport Beach, my husband and I were very deliberate about our decision to raise our family here in this great city. We love living here. We walk to the beach and into the village with other neighborhood families. We take classes through the Newport Navigator. My husband coaches flag football, and our son just completed his first junior guard monster mile. As much as I enjoy a good Steve Rosansky-led debate, it would be much easier to sit back and enjoy life as I've built it and hope someone else will fight to preserve our quality of life. That's just not how I'm wired. I have been investing in Newport since our son was born. I went through our award-winning CERT program and the Citizens Police Academy before being appointed to the city's aviation committee. I joined the airport working group, where I spearheaded the effort to work with the airlines in an effort to get them to be better neighbors to the residents living under the flight path. I'm now in my sixth year on Planning Commission, where I was just unanimously voted by my peers to serve as Chair. As a founding board member of the Newport Beach Foundation, I started a parent education series to help parents navigate through the difficult issues facing families today and supported our organization's overwhelmingly successful efforts to ignite the next generation of leadership in the city through our distinguished citizen program and scholarships. Public safety is my top priority. I have the utmost esteem for our police and fire and have worked closely with them in efforts of community engagement and education and supported... Excuse me, in implementing proactive security measures as the Vice President of my Homeowners Association. I support fully funding our top-notch police department and helping relieve them of the burden of social work in response to our homeless population so that they can focus on what they do best: defending our city and protecting our neighborhoods.
Thank you, Lauren. Thank you. All right, now, audience, a rousing round of applause for these opening statements. Thank you, candidates. Very good. All right, now, we're gonna go into the lightning round, so get your paddles ready. Series of yes-or-no questions. Again, no verbal response or explanation will be allowed. I'll run through these. Ready? Make sure Eric's good there. Okay, here we go. Number one: Are you a Newport Beach resident? Okay, that seems to be a good answer. Do you favor the regulation of e-bikes in the city? Should the peninsula boardwalk be extended to the Santa Ana River jetty? Are you supportive of an oasis-style community center for West Newport? Do you favor changing the way we elect council members to district-only voting as opposed to city-wide voting? Should the city commerce... Should the city commence with the dredging of the harbor under the currently-approved plan to bury contaminated materials in the harbor bottom? Overall, was the city's response to the pandemic appropriate? Are you in favor of restricting fractional ownership of residential properties? Do you support the creation of a city-funded and staffed harbor patrol? Was the City Council correct in its decision to limit the number of short-term lodging If elected to City Council, will you be holding regular town hall meetings in your Are you supportive of imposing development agreement fees similar to what is currently required in the airport area and Newport Center as a means of funding capital improvements in the city? Do you believe that sea-level rise is a threat to the low-lying areas of the city? Do you support the funding of the city Sculpture Garden at the City Hall Park? With the sale of the Banning Ranch to the Public Land Trust and the Mountains Recreation and Conservation Authority only days away, should the city take an active role in the planning and development of the property? Very good, ladies and gentlemen. A round of applause. They got through the lightning round. Those are tough questions. Excellent. Okay, now, we're on part three. I'm gonna ask a series of more complex questions that candidates are gonna be allowed one minute to answer. So again, candidates, reminding, listen carefully to each question, and I'll not go on until the current question before the next question is read. So I'm gonna reverse order here, starting Districts 3, 4, 6, and 1, and let me find these questions. First question is: At two recent meetings of the Chamber's Wake First question is, "At two recent meetings of the Chamber's Wake-Up Newport Program, the subject of the extension of John Wayne Airport's runways came up. In May, Supervisor Lisa Bartlett expressed her belief that if the runways were extended an additional 500 feet, larger and quieter airplanes could land that can carry more passengers. Two weeks ago, new airport director Charlene Reynolds said that she was not advocating for an expansion of the airport, but that the decision is up to the Board of Supervisors. What is your position on extension of the runways at John Wayne Airport, and how do you intend to protect Newport Beach residents from airport noise, pollution, and traffic impacts?" Let's begin with Amy Peters. Amy?
Lucky me.
Lucky you.
Well, since I've lived here since 1979 in basically the same neighborhood, I live across the street from the house where I grew up. The airport has always been an issue, and I've been, my parents before me, and then myself, have been fighting the extension and expansion of the airport since I've lived here. It's very loud. Extending the runway, they say we'll do this, but there's always circumstances that they didn't plan for. And I was flying in and out of John Wayne when you had to pull the stairway up to the airport, and the baggage claim went around and around outside. So I would have been happy if it had stayed that way, but I will fight tooth and nail to keep that airport from expanding and turning into a 24-hour operation. Thank you.
Eric Weigand.
Yeah, if I have to tie myself to a tree at that Newport Beach golf course, I will. Like, I, you know, that's ridiculous that we're even discussing this. You know, I've been in conversation with Supervisor Bartlett. I've heard her say that 787 is quieter if we can run that out of John Wayne. I just, I couldn't even fathom that for our city having that. I used to work with OKRA, the Orange County Regional Airport Authority. I worked for Jim Silva back in the day, and Jim was our supervisor, and he fought tooth and nail to get that airport at El Toro. And so, you know, I can't, I can't, I can't go any further to say how against that I would be.
Thank you, Eric. Jim Mosher. Jim?
Thank you, Lucy. I too am absolutely opposed to any idea of extending the runway. Obviously, it would allow not only newer planes, but also older, noisier, heavier planes to take off on that runway. Having lived for 42 years, immediately adjacent to the departure corridor, my preferred solution would be controlled demolition of the airport, but that, that obviously is not a realistic possibility, given the county's unfortunate inability to come together on an alternative site for it. We need to protect and defend our settlement agreement, and more importantly, we need to be vigilant at keeping a lid on the increasing number of small general aviation jets that are taking off every day. They could be as numerous as the commercial ones. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Robyn Grant.
My time has been ceded. That's when they mentioned it. I'm unopposed.
Unopposed? Okay, so that, so, very good. Thank you. Moving on, then, Joyce.
We know where she stands, though.
Joyce Brenner. I mean, Joy. Joy Brenner. I'm now, I'm now like Eric. I'm like, oh, I'm for Clem. I should have, okay, Joy.
I agree with everyone. I agree if we could demolish it, that would be perfect. I've lived here for 60 years, since that airport was tiny, and so anyone that says that the airport was here first can come and talk to those of us who've been here before, because that is, was a tiny airport that did not impact us at all. I just want to say, the way that I've chosen to deal with this, I know we're not going to demolish it, I know I can't just oppose everything, but I've chosen to work with the Orange County Board of Supervisors. I've visited with every one of them regarding the airport. We've talked about how that impacts the quality of life here, but also what that would be like if it were in their neighborhood. And I just, yesterday was at a press conference with Katrina Foley that they are implementing the Fly Friendly Program, which is what the city has been asking for since 2020, and it's asking them to voluntarily go higher, quicker, quieter, and less impact. Thank you.
Thank you, Joy. Lauren Kleiman.
I too am opposed to any sort of runway expansion. I've been asked several times to rejoin the Board of Airport Working Group, which is one of the signatories to the settlement agreement. I've also been asked by several of the community group leaders to chair the aviation committee if elected. I would continue the efforts that I initiated with the airlines to incentivize them to bring in quieter Stage Four aircraft, as Frontier has done with the NEO, and adopt the preferred departure procedures. Parallel efforts should also be made with the FBOs, who influence, who have influence over the general aviation activity. Most importantly, as Mr. Mosher pointed out, the settlement agreement is the only one of its kind, and we should be starting to lay the groundwork with the stakeholders now in order to ensure that it's extended when the current term expires in 2030. Thank you.
Thank you, Lauren. Joe Stapleton.
Yeah, this is one of the biggest threats to quality of life. I couldn't agree more with my fellow candidates. We absolutely have to do everything in our power to make sure that runway is never extended. And Eric, let me know when you go out there, I'll chain myself to the tree next to you. We can't let that happen. We've got to protect the settlement agreement to continue with the curfew, the passenger count, and absolutely the noise reduction. I work very closely with Keith Curry and the Airport Working Group. I've had a lot of conversations with Lee Pearl and everything going on in Balboa Island. I unequivocally definitely do not support extending the runway.
Thank you, Joe. Tom Miller.
Yeah, I think we're unanimous with this. Charlene Reynolds is the new airport director. She spoke here a few weeks ago, and she does not support the runway expansion. On top of that, we're the only airport in the country with this curfew, so this settlement agreement has to be kept in check. It expires in 2030, the curfew expires in 2035. It's critical that we keep that intact, so nobody up here is going to support that. And we have seven monitoring noise sites in Orange County, and if you really want to know the truth behind the airport, Dennis is the expert on the airport. So he knows, he's spent hundreds of hours dealing with this airport issue, and none of us up here want to affect our quality of life in Newport Beach. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next question. Ready? "Recently, the subject of group homes has bubbled to the surface once again in Newport Beach. Some say that the city is not doing enough to regulate these homes under their existing ordinances, and that perhaps we should pass more stringent laws similar to what surrounding cities have done. What is your impression regarding group home business in Newport Beach, and how do you intend to address the concerns of Newport Beach residents?" And let's start with District Six. And Lauren.
Thank you. You know, actually, this is something that led to my decision to run for council at this time. I received a call from a neighbor, because I'm both on Planning Commission and on our homeowners association board. She was upset about the fact that a neighbor had been offered just an obscene amount of money to rent a home just up the street from her to a supportive care facility, and wanted to know what we could do about it. And of course, I explained that the state now says that a home is a home, and that as long as there are six or fewer people living in that home, regardless of what kind of care or issues are being dealt with there, that there was nothing that the city could really do. So we have worked on the Planning Commission to limit as much as we can. However, it still comes down to pushing back with the state in trying to get these things changed, because as they stand today, they are beyond the city's control.
Thank you. Joy.
This is an issue that I also ran four years ago, thinking that I was going to resolve, and have been working on it from the very beginning, and it has to be the most frustrating thing that I've had to deal with. Well, homelessness is frustrating, too, so, but what we found out was, yes, the city keeps telling us, we don't have any control if the homes are six beds and under. If they're, if they're 12 beds, then the city regulates them, but the operators have figured out that they just do six-bed facilities, and then they don't have to get the city to give them a permit. Then they do another one right next door, and it's actually an integral facility, but we can't get the state to regulate that. So we have been begging our electeds. We called a meeting, Diane Duffy and I have been on that subcommittee, we called a meeting with Katrina, with Cotty, with the city, with the county attorney, and we got everybody in one room with our citizens, and we're still working on it as hard as we can.
Very good. Thank you. And Tom?
First thing we need to do if they're unlicensed is we need to shut them down. Second thing I'd like to propose, that if they are licensed, even if they are an integral facility, which is typically two side by side with six beds each, is to have an open-door policy. I want to come to an agreement with them where a city official can come in with little notice and inspect the facility. Let's approach them with kindness and see if we can make progress. And what's going to help our movement is getting someone like Diane Dixon to Sacramento that could help us solve this problem, because I sat down with several residents, and it's a big issue within our city.
Great. Thank you. And Joe?
Thank you. I've been on the peninsula for 15 years. Sober living facilities, group homes are nothing new to me. I lived on 11th Street, and my next-door neighbor was a sober living facility. I can promise you their direction and their initiative was not to get these people sober. At $30,000 a month for six people in a home, I not once saw a concerted effort to make sure these people weren't returning customers. You don't have to go much further than Santa Ana Heights to see what happens when you have a bad operator in our community. The thing I'm most frustrated about is that these operations continue to move without permits, and they have 90 days to six months at times when they're not permitted going through the process while Sacramento looks at them, and they continue to operate in our city today. Dahlia in Corona Del Mar has two group homes right now. Talk about destroying the character of our villages in Newport Beach.
Thank you very much. All right, I think I got you all on this one right. Next question. Oh, did I miss District One or District Three? Okay, District Three. Let's begin with Eric. Eric?
Thank you. I've worked with Senator Bates down in South Orange County for the past eight years on this specific issue. It's a very challenging one. The federal government has laws on the books, so federal fair housing and ADA laws. They're treated as disabled, and I want to challenge that. I don't think that those that are in addiction are considered disabled. So I think we have to work regionally, but we also have to work with our federal government, members of Congress, and our state. There are so many laws on the books that prevent us from really doing anything locally, but Costa Mesa has a great ordinance. We should mirror and work together with what they've put. It's been held up in court, and it's working somewhat, not amazingly, but it does work. So I have extreme experience on this particular issue, because I have worked with our legislators, I have worked with locals, and I've got some residents in the city who actually want to participate and get involved, and they'll do it pro bono, and they understand the issue.
Thank you, Eric. Jim?
Thank you, Lucy. Group homes are indeed a problem, although the state considers them compatible with ordinary residences. Most of us do not see them that way. I think we need to pursue the legislative efforts that Councilmember Brenner was referring to, particularly to improve enforcement of the ones operating as integral homes. As Eric said, although Newport Beach was once in the forefront of legal regulation of the group homes, Costa Mesa seems to have moved ahead of us, and when that was presented to the council working groups or to the city council, I cannot totally remember which, our city attorneys said that they were just copying ours. I think we need to be humble enough to acknowledge that they may be to have a better ordinance, and we can improve our regulations in this city if we reexamine them. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Amy?
I have personal experience with this, as an operator tried to open one across the street from my home when I was raising my three young children. And Newport Beach defended us at that time, and now that home has been sold to a family that are raising their two children. We need to continue to protect homeowners from this type of operator, and I think having town halls and bringing our community together and changing that loophole where they've decided that six people living together is a family, they're not an equal family to someone raising their family. There were cigarette butts on the street constantly, we found needles in the yard. These people are not sober. They have generally, they don't get sober, an 87% recidivism rate, which means only 13% are actually getting sober after these homes. We need to figure out a new solution besides group homes to get people sober.
Thank you, Amy. Thank you. All right, next question. These are not easy questions. This is the toughest issues of the day. Homelessness has surged over the last several years, as Newport Beach and communities throughout the state grapple with the issue. The city of Newport Beach has been spending millions of dollars each year in additional staffing, hiring of outside contractors like CityNet and BeWell, and placing homeless people in the Costa Mesa Bridge Shelter. However, a visit to McFadden Square, Corona Del Mar, the Fashion Island Bus Depot, and other areas throughout the city indicate that a significant problem still exists. Is this a result of not enough financial resources, not enough enforcement, or something else? And what actions might you propose to take to solve the problem? Begin with District One, and Joe Stapleton.
Thank you. This is the number one issue in our campaign. We would all agree here, there is no compassion for keeping somebody on the streets. However, there can be no signs of permanency in the city of Newport Beach. The county and the bus stop has failed us. Seeing tents in Fashion Island, there's no district that is more impacted by homelessness than District One. I live on the end of river on the peninsula, and for two years, I dealt with five RVs that parked at the end of my street and lived there, property tax-free, for two years. And we deal with it, I know Paul Watkins and Rhonda are here, we deal with this every single day. We spend over a million dollars for a homeless shelter in Costa Mesa for 20 beds. We spend $1.2 million a year for BeWell. The city is doing a lot, but the city needs to do a lot more, and I'm looking forward to working with the continued leadership in the city to help solve this problem.
Thanks, Joe. Tom?
The first thing we need to do is change our behavior. We've become enablers. I interviewed five homeless individuals a month ago, and their answer to me is why they're homeless in Newport Beach, because we give them everything. So our behavior has to stop. There's signs all over to stop panhandling and good giving. Natalie, our homeless coordinator, is phenomenal, and my choice is, my approach with that is I'm going to ride with her personally, I'm going to ride with BeWell, I'm going to be in the trenches, I'm going to meet these people, and I want to know what our city officials are dealing with. Another thing we need to do, we're spending that million dollars, let's increase the budget a little bit, and let's go from 20 beds to 30 beds. But through it all, regardless of what we do, we need to show compassion to these people. Thank you.
Thank you. Jim?
I believe homelessness is a human tragedy, and I applaud our city staff's response in Newport Beach. I think it's been excellent. However, rather than speaking to what the other candidates are saying, I want to emphasize that to me, this has been an example of the city staff's fear of proper public engagement. In 2019, the council set up a homeless task force of three council members and seven citizens. It quickly disbanded that task force because it thought the meetings were too contentious, and it created a three-council-member committee, which the citizens have no input to, do not know what they're doing, and they fact-furied out that committee. It's been reformed, but all of that is going on. I think we should be embracing public engagement, not being afraid of it. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Amy?
Well, in recent years, the problem has just exploded. When they closed Fairview Center, the mental health issue just became huge, because a lot of these people are on the streets because they have mental health issues. So I agree, we need to be compassionate, but we also need to deal with the root cause of homelessness. Once they're on the street and we're dealing with it, you know, with their stuff and with their person, it's their person, it's almost too late. I sat in the Hoag parking lot emergency room one night at 2:00 AM, and I saw the Costa Mesa ambulance drop off a homeless man and his bags on the corner because they were just moving him around. We have to stop moving them around and start dealing with the root causes of homelessness, which, in my opinion, is mental health and drug addiction.
Eric?
One minute, geez. I sat in Judge Carter's courtroom for a lot of times, and, you know, obviously, this point-in-time count that we just did revealed that we had a 50% increase in Newport Beach, but we were down in our service planning area, SPA is what they're referred to, and for our area, down by 18.5%. So it's regional issues we're talking about here. Homelessness isn't uniquely specific to Newport Beach. It's a regional issue. So we need to work with our regional partners to try to develop. We've done a good job with Costa Mesa. 20 beds, though, at a $1 million annual cost that we pay, we already paid 1.6 to get it set up. It's a lot of money, and it's money, throwing money at this issue, going to solve the issue, I don't really see. So we need to be more aggressive on the streets. We need to have our BeWell more than just 12 hours a day, seven days a week. We need to be 24 hours, and we need to get more aggressive with the population down there because they're aggressive on us, and I see it. They are not friendly people. They're there, and they cause trouble, so we need to push back against them.
Eric, thank you. Joy?
They are all right. We all know that this problem is just insurmountable. I've been working on the homeless committees since I first got elected. I asked to be added to that homeless task force. I disagree with Jim. The homeless task force was assembled with experts from people that know homelessness. They know about it. They, and we were three electeds. It was Will and Brad and I. We were three electeds, and believe it or not, you're not an expert on homelessness when you just get elected. So we had experts there that were able to walk us through what's being done in other cities, what we could do, how we could emulate that. But when we went to the task force meetings, we spent all our time hearing responses like this from everybody who just wants to tell us how bad the problem is, and we get that. We know that. And enforcement is the key. We'll talk later, hopefully, about adding to our enforcement capabilities in Newport Beach because it's a big part of our problem.
Thank you. Lauren?
Thank you. Despite our current council having spent millions on this issue, as you've heard, the number of homeless living in the city has increased by 50%, which sounds like it could be as a result of a number of things or a regional problem. However, Costa Mesa and Laguna's numbers have declined by 20 and 60% respectively. So this, to me, is a failure. It definitely warrants change, and it's not just the residents we're failing, we're failing these individuals. I would start with getting enough shelter beds to meet the Boise case requirement for enforcement, to get people off of the street, and then start getting these individuals who have very unique needs, the services that they require, to get them off of the street permanently. I would also focus on our OCTA and their breach of their obligations at the transit center.
Thank you very much, Lauren. All right, next question. I got you all right this time. Okay, good. Crime has been on many Newport Beach residents' minds. One only has to look on Nextdoor Newport or other social media platforms to read about multiple incidences of bicycle thefts, stolen catalytic converters, car break-ins, package theft, youth vandalism, and home burglaries. Are people's perception of crime in Newport Beach reality? Or is the issue being blown out of proportion due to information they receive on their phones and computers? What is your perception, and how do you intend to alleviate fear of crime in this community? Let's begin with District Three and Amy Peters.
Well, it's definitely not overstated. My catalytic converter has been almost stolen twice. The last time was three weeks ago in my driveway at 4:15 AM. I was walking my dog. Don't ask why I walk my dog at 4:00, but, and these four guys pulled up in two Dodge Challengers and with hoodies and masks and approached my driveway, and I went up to them and I said, "What the heck are you doing?" Obviously, maybe that wasn't the smartest thing to do in hindsight, because I didn't have my cellphone, but, you know, they, all they were worried about at that point, after I got them to leave, was getting their jack, because they were threatening me with the handle, but they had to push me out of the way, so I had bruises. It was crazy. But the thing about our police department is we need to make sure they're fully funded. And if we need more police officers on the street, then we should get them, because this is a reality. It is not blown out of proportion, and I've experienced it myself.
Thank you, Amy. Jim?
I actually am not quite so confident of the answer as Amy is. Just a few weeks ago, my neighbor immediately crossed the street on my cul-de-sac. In the morning, I discovered her car had been broken into, but my neighbor was not following the advice of our police department and left her car unlocked. I think our police department is quite competent, and I do not agree that it is understaffed currently. Thank you.
Eric?
You know, crime stats are kind of like unemployment figures. Anytime you look at them, they can be skewed in a way that says what you want it to believe when you want it to believe it. But I think property crime, drug crime, there's been a Chilean gang influence in Santa Ana Heights. The property crime is increasing. We have to be vigilant to it. Yeah, maybe homicides and other crimes are down, but property crimes are definitely up. I think drugs are a major contributor. People are looking to fiend themselves, get themselves that habit, that itch, so they're looking for it. But state policies like AB 109, Prop 47, Prop 57, and a whole host of current legislation is coming down the pipe that makes it very difficult for our police officers to do their job. Luckily, we have Sheriff Barnes and Chief Lewis. These guys are on top of it, but they need our support. We have to make sure that the department is properly funded. We will never defund the police. I guarantee all of them will say that up here. We will work hard to make sure that our officers are fully funded, and we will push back where we can. It's a hard task to do, but the state has put regulation on us and made very difficult times.
Lauren?
Thank you. So as a number of people have said up here, even if the stats have remained somewhat flat, it's no consolation when your home or your neighbor's home is, you know, burglarized or if you've been targeted in some way. We do have an incredible police department. Our detectives have made a number of arrests, but it's like playing whackable, you know, with these crime rings. When you make an arrest, another one pops up, and they are very much professionals. One of the things that I would do is try to work with the other levels of government to remove places like Chile from the visa signatory program, to make sure that there's a full vetting process in place for individuals that might be coming here for the purpose of committing these crimes. I would also, as we've talked about, work to reduce the homelessness issue so that that can relieve the burden on our police department, so that they can focus on these issues, and of course, encourage our residents to be more vigilant as well.
And Joy?
I think what keeps coming out in the answers to these questions is that we all recognize the problems. The point is, how do you solve them? That's the problem. And I don't think anyone in here is convinced that our city is safe enough. I don't care what the statistics say, and I'm not convinced that they're accurate because they've changed the definition of a felony, and a lot of the ways that they measure things are not really accurate. So I think the point is, we have to find the ways to make sure, we make sure we're the safest city in the nation. We should be. We pay high property taxes, and I am on a committee that is working with Grace Leung, the city manager, and John Lewis to make sure we're fully funded and increase our staff because there's not enough of them to do everything we're asking them to do. We're asking them to monitor short-term rentals. We're asking them to monitor loud cars and racing cars on our roads. We're asking them to take care of burglaries. There's just too much, and we need more help to do this.
Thank you, Joy. All right, next question. The state of Cal, oh, I'm sorry, did I, once again, Tom, you're up.
I first want to say that John Lewis runs an incredible department. I'm proud of our police department. I also want to say that we're understaffed, and I believe we need more policing. Since 2008, I don't know if you know this, we're down 10 police officers, and they feel it. They're stressed, they're going out on stress leave, they're working an exorbitant amount of overtime. We cannot put a price on public safety. That's where my passion lies. Some of the statistics say that perhaps crime is down, but one major crime in our city is one too many. And I checked with 12 resources that track the 10 safest cities in California. We have five in Orange County, and we're not one of them. So it's my mission to be number one in the state and then go after the nation like Joy mentioned earlier. Thank you.
Thank you.
Let me begin with saying I support our police, and that's why they support me. I was the first candidate up here they endorsed. That's important. I was on the finance committee, and in 2020, we didn't defund our police. We continue to invest in our police department. For me, endorsed by the police department and Sheriff Barnes, Gary Sherwin talks about destination tourism and destination shopping. We have destination crime in beach communities like Newport Beach. This is also a problem of Sacramento's catch-and-release. My neighbor's house was broken into and destroyed by a transient. The police showed up and arrested this person the same day they were released, and guess where they went? Right back to my neighbor's house. The catch-and-release system has to end, and we have to continue to push back on policies from Sacramento.
Thank you very much. All right, and I really appreciate you guys keeping your moderator in check with the math, so thank you for doing that. All right, ready for the next question? The state of California has experienced a chronic housing shortage, which is partially responsible for the high cost of housing, and many people, many experts, say it's also part of the reason why our homeless population has exploded. Pursuant to the Regional Housing Needs Assessment, or RENA, the city of Newport Beach was allocated 4,845 new housing units to plan for in the 2021-2029 planning cycle. Roughly half of these units are designated as affordable units. Should you be elected, the changes to the housing element and the general plan will occur while you are in office. Are you satisfied with the city's planning process to date? And is it your preference that affordable units be integrated with market-rate units or be separated, separate housing? And now we're going to begin with six. Go to one and three. So District Six, let's start with Joy.
Big, big question. I wish I had an hour to talk about this. We have been fighting about this with Sacramento since the RENA numbers came out. There is actually a lawsuit that is being waged by several cities. We may join it after our housing plan is approved and certified by Sacramento. We want to get that done first, which looks like it will be soon, and then we may join that lawsuit, because there are very extreme opinions that the way those numbers were calculated were not right. I believe they said that we have, they're saying that we have the same number of needed homes in Southern California that they have nationwide. So there's a lot of discrepancy about that. There's so much that we could talk about on this one. I just, I'm working with League of Cities, I'm working with the Association of Elected Officials, I'm working with, it's a big problem, so we have to look at it from a more global perspective.
Thank you, Joy. Lauren?
So Sacramento has enacted 80 new housing laws over the past seven years. As you heard, we have to plan for 4,800 units, most of them affordable. We have new ADU laws, which can't be circumvented by HOA restrictions. We have lot-splitting density bonus laws, all with the potential to change the character of our neighborhoods forever. We need to push back and work in strategic alliance and coalition with other cities throughout the state, and we also need to stand behind our Greenlight Initiative. At the same time, we have to encourage projects that work for our city, such as unobtrusive ADU's student and senior housing.
Thank you very much. Joe?
I mean, there's a theme here, right? It's Sacramento. I mean, Sacramento continue to dictate the quality of life for the residents in Newport Beach. As a former chairman of the Board of the Chamber of Commerce, being on the same side of SPA, like Joy talked about, is unusual. This is the first time that everybody in Newport Beach is on the same page. Nobody wants this. We need to preserve the quality of life. We need to maintain the different characters of the villages we have here in Newport Beach. For me, we need to protect Greenlight, and we need to do everything we can to continue to fight against this.
Tom?
Yeah, I think we could all agree that we need to push back on the state, but this is what's scary. This number of 4,832 units can turn into 9,000 units based on affordable housing and new projects. But that being said, let's push back, let's ask that auditor, they refuse to give us the formula that they use to calculate our number. But eventually, we're going to come to a agreeable number. And what's important to me is that we carve out a portion of that affordable housing and make it available to our fire, our police, our teachers, our local workers at our hotels and restaurants that can't afford to live in our city. That's the most important objective to me in this whole RENA number.
Thank you. Eric?
Yeah, again, one minute. This is self-manufactured crisis from Sacramento. I mean, CEQA reform is needed. The cost of building a home is extremely unattainable for most communities and for people to reside in a whole state. This is not a Newport Beach problem, but the state has forced it to be our problem, and that's the unfortunate part of this whole mix. Coming more on a local level, we need to keep our villages safe. We already are built out, but our airport area is a place the city has determined that we can grow, but it needs to be master-planned. We have to have services there, too. We can't just put all these housing tracts in there, but we also have grocery stores and dry cleaners and opportunities for services and retail, so we have to look at that. But I think council has done a good job of trying to find where the housing has to be. Not one Newport Beach police officer lives in our city, so we need to talk about workforce housing as well, so we need to address that and make sure that those who work, live, play in our city get to stay and be a part of our city. Those that want to be here should get the opportunity to be here.
Thank you, Eric. Amy?
I agree. We need to push back against Sacramento. The statistics they're using are very obscure, and it's not a one-size-fit-all approach. We need to band together with local cities and fight back against Sacramento trying to dictate what our local communities are doing. They don't live here. They don't know what our needs are. You know, I've lived here long enough to watch them protect the Back Bay and make it a protected land, a wetlands. These are important things. We can't just build up all our green spaces in Newport Beach.
Thank you. And Jim?
Thank you. In answer to the question that was asked, I believe that some of the affordable housing that we are obligated to produce should be separate. I'm thinking of senior affordable housing that would appropriately be separate, and some of the other affordable housing would be properly integrated into development that would have a variety of pricing in it. The second part of the question, I am unhappy with this direction. I see the staff moving this because I see this going on the ballot for a Greenlight vote, which the residents of Newport Beach are likely to reject, and that will bring down on us litigation that could invalidate our Greenlight measure. I have a possible solution to that, which came to me after attending the last General Plan Update Steering Committee meeting. Unfortunately, I can't explain that to you in the one minute.
Thank you very much. All right. The city council has recently negotiated new multi-year contracts with its various labor unions, locking in 2% increases for the next three to four years. Meanwhile, a visit to the gas station or grocery store will demonstrate that inflation is currently running at 8% to 9%, and economists are predicting that inflation will run above 2% over the next few years as the Federal Reserve attempts to get it under control. There is talk of the city council increasing employee labor contracts, increases by 1% across the board. How would you address this problem, as well as the potential for employees to leave for other cities or jobs in the private sector that pay better? Another very easy question. Let's begin Districts One, Three, and then Six. And in District One, let's start with Tom Miller.
Yeah, this is... Yeah, this is, uh, part of why I'm running for city council. It's not about my voice, it's not about the council's voice, it's about your voice. And, and in a situation like this, I think I put it out to the voters and I want input from you. I want you to have say so as to what direction we should go. Because when you talk about money, you talk about budget, you talk about people's wellbeing, you should have a voice and that's what's most important to me.
And Joe.
I, I've been on the finance committee for six years. I manage money for a living. This is the wheelhouse I'm very comfortable in. We have a $265 million budget, all-in expenses around $245 million. We have a structural surplus in the city of Newport Beach. We're bringing in $130 million from property taxes. We bring over $45 million in sales taxes and we bring over $25 million in TOT taxes or bed tax or hotel tax. The city is well-funded. In my opinion, this is the greatest city in the country and people are happy to work here. I understand what's going on and the city council has done a very good job and our city manager, the grace of the arm, continues to do a great job recruiting and retaining the best talent and I lean on them to continue to do that.
Jim.
Yeah, thank you. I, I certainly agree that our city employees should be fairly paid. Uh, and I, and inflation is a problem and we need to respond to that equitably for our employees. I think the idea that, that they would be leaving for the private sector or going to some other better-paid city is much overblown, as Joe pointed out. This is a very good city to work for and I have not seen that we have any problem retaining good employees. Thank you.
And Amy.
Inflation is an issue and we need to pay the employees of the city and our police and fire commensurately with the cost of living. If we want to have productive and happy employees, we need to pay them. And that's one of the wonderful things about Newport Beach is we've always had a balanced budget and a surplus. And if we need to dip into that surplus for a few years to support our support staff, then we should do that. If we want to keep Newport employees wanting to be here, then we need to pay them.
Eric.
Yeah, I mean, with inflation increases, I, I, I'm happy to entertain the, the discussions to readjust the MOU with the, with police and fire. I mean, again, what I was saying is not one police officer lives in our city. So they, they have to commute and all of our employees probably have to commute. There's probably not too many Newport Beach employees that live in our city. So, um, but pay is a big thing. I've talked to city staff on this particular issue and pay is, is bigger to the younger generation than the benefits. But if you look, we have 730 full-time employees, 51% of them are public safety and we have a $245, $244 million budget with 67% of that going to salaries and benefits. That's our budget. And, um, so we definitely need to be cognizant of what we're spending our money on, but also we want the best of the best. It's Newport Beach, we're a full-service city and we want to retain these employees that will be here for a long time. So, you know, again, back to the workforce housing issue, we can talk to them, perhaps if we came out with the right plan, that gives our employees an opportunity to live here and maybe we cover over some of those benefits and include that as part of the proposal. So there's a lot to talk about on this issue, but I think we can, uh, agree that they're not paid enough when we're talking about the inflation that's been going on.
And Joy.
It's more than just the pay structure. It has to do with our police especially not being able to live near here. I rode, um, with one of our policemen the other day who said he drives to Temecula and back and it's two hours each way. Then when our police chief says he can't get people to be agreeable to doing overtime, I say, well, I understand that. They're spending four hours on the day of the day that are their commuting. So I've worked with a group of developers and SPON and we are coming up with a Newport Beach Housing Trust. And the reason we're doing this is to bridge the gap between what we can do with salaries, what we can do with grants, what we can do with city funding to take care of affordable housing, but also to increase workforce housing. And that is one of the things we are working the hardest on. We're working with HOG, we're working with the school district, we're working with our police and our fire and our public, um, employees and they do a great job. There's no way that, they, they do need to be paid more, but it's more than that. They need extra people to help them. They can't do it all the way we're asking them to do it.
And Lauren.
Obviously, this is an issue that is not unique to the city of Newport Beach and, um, as you've heard, we do spend a vast majority of our budget on not just personnel, but on police and fire, which of course we, we value and want to prioritize. It, it is a more complex issue and we do have the ability in our budget to hire additional, um, police personnel. However, it, it's more than just money. It's about recruiting the right people. Obviously, here in Newport, um, you know, we do, we have high expectations of all of our employees and especially our police department. And Chief Lewis has done an incredible job making sure that we have the best of the best. And of course, retention is where we want to focus. I do think that our city has done a great job. There's always room for improvement, especially if we see that we're starting to lose some of those great people.
Thank you, Lauren. Um, candidates, there are several terrific questions that the chamber, um, has developed for me to ask of you for really some thoughtful answers, but we're, we're at the witching hour. So with your permission, I'm going to edit these questions and ask you to hold up your panels in a simple thumbs up, thumbs down, yes, I support, no, I don't. And, um, and then I know that constituents will be interested, uh, in asking you more information after this, um, this discussion. So first question. The San Clemente City Council recently met to discuss a resolution declaring San Clemente a sanctuary for life and banning or permitting or zoning which would allow abortion facilities. Do you believe, yes or no, that you should use, let me frame it this way, should you be allowed to use your office to advance causes or issues that are not within the purview of the city to regulate or control? Thank you very much. Next question. These are tough. This past Tuesday, the Costa Mesa City Council on a 6-1 vote agreed to place a measure on the ballot that would amend its 2016 Measure Y limits on development in specified areas within the city to take them out of citywide voting requirements for approval of new projects. Over two decades ago, Newport Beach voters approved a slow-growth ballot measure similar to Measure Y, commonly referred to as Green Light. You've all talked about that today. Do you favor carefully-developed changes to Green Light to facilitate development in Newport Beach? Tough. I know, I know. I'm putting you on the spot. Okay, good. Thank you. On June 6th, Newport Beach voters were asked by a majority vote of the city council to vote on Measure B, which would have made significant changes to our city charter with regard to how we elect a mayor and the duties of the mayor. One of the claims by the residents opposed to Measure B was that this issue had not been previously discussed when the proponents of Measure B ran for city council. Do you support changes to our city charter? Tough. Thank you. All right. Ladies and gentlemen, tough questions, great city. Would you give this round of questions for our members a round of applause? That's great. Really good. All right. We're now on part four of today and we're going to allow each candidate one minute to make concluding remarks. And we're going to start with District Three and Amy Peters.
Well, we're all here today because we want to make sure local government is strong. I'm happy to be here with Jim and Eric because I think every seat here should have three to four people. We should all be involved in local government and it should be locally funded because we should be representing our constituents. That's why I'm running. We started our business here, we raised our family here, and we believe in Newport Beach, my husband and I. And everyone here is here because they want to know where Newport Beach is going. Well, I want to keep Newport Beach the way it is. Not that we don't make progress, but we protect our citizens' rights, we protect our institutions and we support our kids, our homeless, and all of the people that represent Newport Beach. Thank you.
Eric.
Yeah, thanks for having us. You know, I look back to where I've been over the years. I bring a lot of experience to the table. Uh, I've worked at federal legislators, I've worked with state legislators, I've worked at the county at the Board of Supervisors level, and I've worked in the city level being on the Planning Commission. So I think I have a lot of experience to bring to the table to hit the ground running once elected. Um, I do think a lot of these issues are regional, so I think we can work with a lot of our partners, OCTA, um, the Toll Road Agency, all these guys, we have to represent as legis, or as city council members. So I think I can bring that dynamic to the, uh, to, to the table. And, uh, I've been here my whole life. I understand how the city operates. I know a lot about what it takes to be a city council member and I think that I would do a good job representing, uh, the community. I appreciate all of the candidates being up here. There's not much we disagree on. I think we're all very similar in our mindset and we all want to protect our city and help. And so I appreciate everyone being here and I thank you guys for your participation because it's not easy to do what we're doing, but it's not easy to, uh, to, to, to sit back and, and let our city crumble. So thank you for your participation, too.
And Jim Mosher.
Uh, thank you, Lucy. Uh, first thing I want to emphasize, I am the only candidate who has been to all the council meetings for the last 13 years and heard all of the comments that the residents have made, both verbally and in writing at those meetings. I think the people of Newport Beach need somebody for them questioning what the staff proposes, as I have done for those 13 years. We have had many complex questions asked here today, which none of us have been able to answer adequately in one minute. And so I am saying I will fulfill my promise once the video has been posted, so I actually know what the questions were. A thoughtful answer and better articulated one to each and every one of those questions that was asked. And I will post those on my website, jimmosher.com, that addresses not only that, but numerous other issues that I have seen in the last 13 years that need addressing. And I thank you again for being here today and allowing me to offer to serve you in that capacity. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Lauren.
Thank you. Government's response to COVID showed us how much can change in a year, let alone in a four-year council term, and how important it is to elect strong leaders to represent us. Newport is fortunate enough to have many community members like yourselves who are passionate about local issues and make their voices heard. However, there are many business owners, professionals, parents, and other residents in the city who don't have the bandwidth to come to a city council member, excuse me, meeting or write a letter to the editor. Though their voices aren't less heard, these people make our city thrive and also deserve to be represented. There's no substitute for listening and community collaboration, but leadership requires action, solutions, and the relationships to execute. As a planning commissioner, a lawyer, a businesswoman, a board member, and a neighbor, most importantly, a mom, people turn to me to get things done. Along with neighbors and colleagues, Mayor Kevin Muldoon, Councilman Duffield, O'Neill, and Blum support my candidacy because I'm a demonstrated leader committed to public safety. I hope to earn your vote as well.
Thank you, Lauren. Joy.
Yes. Um, I did not want to run for city council. Four years ago, I did not want to run because we had, but we had a city council member who was not representing the community. He was not listening to our voices. So I read on restoring, I ran on restoring citizen-driven government. I've spoken for 50 years to people about just go to city council, just respectfully tell them what you want, give them the facts, understand all the issue and tell them what you need and you will get results. I have to say during the last four years, when the people that Lauren just referenced, Team Newport, have been in control, I've started telling people, you don't need to come to city council meetings. You can come, every single one of the people in the city can come and tell us what they want and the city council with the power structure that's there is going to do exactly what they intend to do all along. They're not going to listen to everything that the citizens have to say. And that is the reason that I had to run for another term. Thank you.
Thank you. And Tom Miller.
So please understand, I will treat you with the respect that you deserve. I'm not going to judge you based on your political affiliation, your religious beliefs, or your sexual preference. I'm going to treat you as you are, as a human being, as an American, and as my neighbor. I want to be your voice, I want to be your partner, and I want to be your representative. This race isn't about me versus Joe, it's about what's right for the city and what you believe in. Joe is not my enemy. Joe is my opponent and I respect him as my opponent. This is about you having a voice and making a choice and that's the true definition of democracy. Thank you.
Very good. And Joe.
Well, let me start by thanking each of you for getting up early and being here and caring and getting engaged with local politics. It's not a mistake that Newport Beach is where it is today. It's because of incredibly strong leadership from previous and current city council and so many terrific community leaders just like you. I'm not running because I'm upset, I'm not running because I have an ego, I'm running because I want to continue to serve the city that has been so great to each of us. I'm asking for your vote. It's not a responsibility I take lightly. I can promise you no one's going to outwork me and no one's going to be a better listener than me. I look around this room this morning and we all share similar values. My vision, it's not a dream. It's one I've been living for the last 16 years. You can go to my website, stapletonfornewport.com, so together we can keep Newport Newport. Thank you.
Well, ladies and gentlemen, I want to first thank once again this amazing group of candidates. I think Newport Beach is just blessed with having some top talent here in the room today and you guys all have tough choices to make. You have very tough issues. You are no different than every city in the state and I just want to personally thank all of you for joining us. Thank the Newport Beach Chamber for putting on one of the best candidate forums I've ever participated in. I've learned a lot myself. But one more round of applause for these wonderful people. Thank you for stepping up. Thank you. And now I turn the microphone over to our fearless leader, Steve Rosansky, for some closing comments.
Well, as the true master that she is, she's finished us up right on time. So thank you. How about a big round of applause for our moderator, Lucy Dunn? I, I hope to have another candidate debate on September 22nd, so I'll send you that email later.
It'll have to be in Hawaii.
Oh, no. Well, it looks like it's going to be on Zoom. No, uh, we'll figure it out, but thank you again.
Oh, is she going to go to Hawaii?
Oh, yeah, true. I know. Can I expense that? Where's my board? All in favor? No, okay. Uh, no, this has been a great forum and great answers. I mean, you get to, you know, hear, you know, first blood here. However, there are at least, uh, my sister, who gracefully, gracefully ceded her time to the candidates so they would have more time to tell you about what they're about, sent me a list of at least 10 or 12 other candidate forums that are going to be happening between now and election. I'm sure there'll be even more than that. So if, if you have friends or neighbors that didn't have a chance to come down this morning because they're not morning people or had kids that had to get to school or went to work or whatever, there have been many opportunities to hear these folks speak about the issues. I'm sure all of them have websites, you can contact them through there. Uh, they have literature outside if you want to pick it up on the way out. And, um, you know, I also want to thank you for engaging. I was a city councilman here for nine years and, and, uh, you know, it's butts and seats that count. And so you are the butts and seats today and, uh, thank you. No stand, there are no questions today. So thank you again and please, please, oh, big shout out, thank you to, to Matt and Champagne's again. He's got a, he's got a ton of food out there. Please take some home. Matt does not want to take it back to the restaurant. He can't serve it once it's been here. Thank you all for coming. Uh, if you're a chamber member, tomorrow luau by the lake at our office starting at 4:30. Hope to see you there. Take care.